Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of 5:18. I'd like to remind everyone, this is being broadcast live. It's also being recorded for use at a later date. I would ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. Good evening, everyone. Michelle, we're going to ask to pass over the, uh, let's take, let's take attendance. Steve Boyce.
Yes.
Don Byers.
Yes.
Dan Colliday.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Chris Griffin.
Yes.
Fred Small.
Yes.
Hallie Taylor.
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. All are present and accounted for. Michelle would ask us to pass over the minutes as she's not prepared yet. Is that correct, Michelle? Entertain a motion to pass over.
Mr. Small, make that motion.
I'll second that motion, Chris Griffin.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing done, Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Mr. Byers.
Yes.
Mr. Colliday.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Hallie Taylor.
Yes.
Bob Hayes. Okay. As you know, the last meeting, we had some discussion about the budget and some different questions that needed to be asked. And Jeff had submitted questions to Christine Lynch and Steve Hemming. And those questions were answered this morning, so I'm going to turn it over to Jeff to tell you what the questions were and how they were answered. And then hopefully we can move to some sort of a conclusion before the end of this meeting. Jeff?
Okay, thanks, Bob. So this morning, I met on a Zoom call with Christine Lynch and Michelle Griffin from DESI, Andy Wall, the school attorney, Steve Hemmen from Mars, George Farrell, John Tuffy, Michelle Lindberg, Bob Hayes, and Chris Griffin, Frank Lytton from, the town administrator from Whitman, and John Stanbrook, the town administrator from Hanson. So I, I will just read the questions and the answers that school committee members asked of that group. And then I will give you a summary of, of what else was taking place, the overall gist of the meeting, which is really specifically involving the, if the school committee could make an amendment to the regional agreement for one specific thing, meaning the assessments for either town, which we discussed last week and was proposed to you last week. So, um, one of the, the first question was, can we add an amendment that would obligate Hanson to reimburse Whitman to the same dollar amount of relief that Whitman is providing for the FY21 if the amount shifts and Whitman owes more? The answer was, this should be a side MOU between Whitman and Hanson and not part of the amendment or regional agreement. So, so I'm going to read these questions and answers. And after I'm done, you can please follow up with a question, if you have an additional question on the answer that I provide. The other, another question, can we add an amendment that would obligate Hanson to reimburse Whitman to the same dollar amount of relief that Whitman is providing for FY21 if Hanson deregionalizes within the next 10 years? The answer was, that would be part of a new regional agreement. The other question, can we add the, add the amendment, amendment that both towns wanted when they started speaking? I believe one of them was to have a seat at the table for negotiation. We had quite a bit of discussion around this question. Mr. Lytton actually asked a few follow-up questions on that. Each town, as I understand it right now, has a seat at the executive part or the executive session of each school committee in negotiations. It's rotational. So whoever was in the last negotiation, if it was Whitman, Hanson would be up in the next negotiation. Our attorney called it the 11th person on the committee. This would not be part of an amendment language. This would be part of the regional agreement if both sides wanted to actually have a seat at the negotiating table. I haven't been part of that process, so I don't really know the process of what we got in the past. I'm looking for different informations from other towns. And I believe town member or towns folks have been involved in, in localities and municipalities as part of negotiations, actually to vote them in. John, can you give a little bit more to that question, please?
When I was at Silver Lake, the member towns got together and were able to choose a member from, from the three towns that would represent the town's interests. And they met with the negotiating subcommittee on a regular basis and also met with the school committee when we had an executive session to talk about what was being proposed and what sort of responses we'd gotten from, from the union. When I was in Cohasset, the town, the town administrator there was a representative of the Board of Selectmen and much the same way, as I mentioned at Silver Lake, come to our executive sessions to both talk about what the town thought about, what, what, what the town thought about what was being discussed, as well as meet with the negotiating subcommittee when we would talk about what the strategy was and what we were looking to do.
Thanks, John. Another question was, can the 9:00 AM meeting be recorded and posted? We didn't have time to post it, 48 hours. This was a business meeting that I call as the superintendent. I did record the meeting for my use and for records for, for Michelle. She did take notes in that, but we have a recording to make sure that we, we have the appropriate information. And if somebody has a follow-up on that, I do have the recording. It's not really for public use. I didn't ask, I asked if it could be recorded. I did not ask the people involved if, if, if that recording could be disseminated outside of, of the people that were in attendance. Can, another question, can Christine, Michelle, Andy, or Steve attend a SC meeting for live feedback? I didn't ask that question at this point. If we need them back again in the future, they are available. I didn't think they'd be available today for, for our meeting. Another question, interregional agreement, the portion of language which relates to how to determine each member's town's proportionate share of the aggregate above minimum contribution? Is it possible for member towns to negotiate and determine this amount based on enrollment figures other than the ratio of pupil enrollment, including out-of-district pupils in, in all member towns in the district? For instance, can this amount be determined using rolling average of enrollment, whether it be two years, three years, four years, five years, et cetera? Christine Lynch said absolutely yes. You could do that. Another question, if both towns were in agreement to deregitalize K-8, what standards would DESI require each independent town to meet in order to deregionalize? If, if both towns were in agreement to deregalyze K-12, what standards would DESI require? Christine spoke at length about what DESI would require, a fine, a strong financial plan to ensure a proper education to both communities, a proper education plan for the students. She said the district alludes regional transportation reimbursement. Steve Hemmen spoke to OPEB, Plymouth County Retirement, and other outstanding obligations. It would be a process. And we would have to have that discussion. But those were the, the terms that they came out with first and foremost. A strong financial plan, as well as an education plan. And then looking at OPEB, transportation reimbursement, Plymouth County Retirement, and outstanding obligation. They also were not clear on whether towns would remain or receive the whole harmless money that we receive as a district. Another question, can the town of Hanson be asked to open its financial books for public awareness or its ability to pay? Based on the premise of Ed reform and Chapter 70 law, how can Whitman, which is offering a 0% raise to most union employees, be expected to pay almost $600,000 of Hanson's assessment under the statutory method? The answer was, you can request information from the Freedom of Information Act. And John alluded to these numbers being on the DOR website. So Hanson's books are there for, for the public to look at. Under what terms of section of the 91 regional agreement can be amended? Can an amendment be proposed to the school, to the school committee by, and member towns for vote? Christine said that the school could vote an amendment to the agreement by majority vote. Any amendment would have to be approved at a town meeting. Another question, I've read Michelle Griffin's FAQ document and didn't see the scenario. If the school committee doesn't have a 2/3 affirmative vote to approve a budget and the commissioner doesn't, and the commissioner doesn't step in on a 1/12th of July and both member towns have a town meeting planned in June, what assessment does each municipality put on their warrant article for funding to be voted on by the taxpayer? If the school committee doesn't approve a budget out of, out of school committee, the town will have any numbers to put on their warrant, therefore moving us to a 1/12th. The only item I have asked Andy to present to Christine is, is, we would like the amendment from the 91 agreement and asked if DESI would accept if agreed by the school committee and Selectmen and then subsequently town meeting. The amendment that Andy drafted was to be presented by two DESI legal for approval. If they don't approve that, and this is from this morning, if they don't approve that and school committee, if you use this amendment without DESI approval first, school committee would have to rescind the vote and be back at square one. You all probably saw what I sent out from Christine Lynch. And I had a phone call conversation with her at 4:15 this afternoon. DESI legal has approved that amendment. They changed a couple of words around, but the overall gist of that amendment met their baseline for approval from the legal side. What she then followed up with was that would have to be voted on by this committee and pushed to the town for approval at town meeting. Before town meeting voted on a budget, they would have to affirm unanimously, both communities affirm that amendment to the regional agreement. So in summary, I wrote the amendment written by Andy, this is before Christine's email to me. The amendment by Andy looks good. We need to use the 91 agreement as this agreement. And this agreement would use an alternative method. The alternative method is a 50-50 split. A, just what I said, Christine needed legal to approve it. If they approve and town meeting approves, we send this to the commissioner. The commissioner has final approval on the amendment. And my phone call conversation with her today is, if the school committee approves it and town meeting approves it, and even if the town votes the budget and the commissioner does not approve this amendment, we don't have a budget. Okay? So the commissioner has final approval on this amendment to the agreement. Let's see. School committee can approve this amendment by majority vote. So a majority of the school committee can move this amendment forward, but we need a 2/3 vote for the budget. Christine, I asked this question twice. Christine reaffirmed twice that we do not benefit as a district and she said, as, as member towns, if the commissioner sets a 1/12th budget. He will use the FY20 approved budget figure submitted last year, approved last year. He will use the FY minimum local contributions that we use in statutory and the FY21 Chapter 70 money that we're allotted to. This will be the statutory method. In her experience, the commissioner has never increased the 1/12th budget over the FY20 numbers, whether it be September, October, or November. She understands that this is problematic and painful for districts. If the district doesn't have a budget by December 1st, the state will take fiscal control using the statutory method. She said no one benefits if the commissioner is involved with the budget. That's a summary of our conversation today. Questions answered, asked and answered. But the, the overall piece was, for this committee was the amendment that, to the regional agreement that was put together with a 50-50 split in the numbers. Is okay with DESI legal moving forward? That was the major question last week. Which, which regional agreement we were for the amendment? She affirmed the 91 agreement. And again, it met the legal, the legal pieces for DESI to move forward with our, with our, if that's the, what the school committee want to do to move a budget out of this committee. And I'll go back to last week. We've been talking for months regarding the budget. I, I know that members of both communities, town administrators and select people and fin comps have been working behind the scenes on some sort of compromise. We talked about compromise in November, December, January, February, March, April, and in May. I, I did hear 50-50 at a regional agreement committee meeting. So I took the liberty to actually put those, those numbers together and presented those to the committee last week. And I know it was short notice, that's why we're meeting here. I hope you had the opportunity to look at what that 50-50 split looks like. And I also made some adjustments to today's budget figures using, if the committee chooses to do so, I can explain, using E and D numbers and using circuit breaker numbers to lower the assessments from last week's assessment to this week's assessment.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Does everybody understand the differences we have? Jeff, I do not have the language seen as DESI changed a few things. So if we're going to entertain any type of motion, you're going to have to read it into the record.
Yep.
Because it's been altered. But would you like to come out with, does the committee want to hear what the superintendent basically using for numbers? I think we should probably move to that part because
Sure.
I'm sure that's going to differ.
Can you send Bob, I can't send Bob the, the language Andy sent back to us? Michelle, do you have that?
That Andy sent?
Yeah.
Christine sent.
Christine sent something and Andy said it looked okay because he just didn't get a chance to talk to her. But he sent something to us about 4:45, 4:50 today.
I don't have that.
I can read it. Okay. So I'll get to the budget numbers and then I'll find that language for you, Bob. So basically, one of the things that this committee talked about was that 50-50 split. And if there was anything we could do to lower the assessments to both communities. As you know, the, the operating budget that we wanted to propose with those four teachers was $55,328,238. My proposal to lower the assessments off of that is to use $250,000 of fiscal 21 circuit breaker. We already are using $450,000. I'm asking to use another, or I'm proposing, I'd like to use another $250,000 to cover costs and lower this assessment and use $350,000 of E and D money to lower the operating assessment. That E and D money, we worked on today, appropriately social distancing in our office, George, Sean, and myself, looked at potential revenues that I went over last year or potential savings because of the closure. John had a conversation, as I mentioned last week, with our local affiliates around first student transportation. They're still working on a negotiation on what, what we should adequately pay to first students. And right now, I'm very comfortable saying that we were going to be able to save $250,000 in first student transportation in FY20. That money would be rolling over into E and D. I'm also very comfortable saying that we could use $100,000 in SJ, or $100, $100,000 in SJ savings that would roll over into E and D. I'm also very comfortable in the savings, and I mentioned last week, the $330,000 deficit in, in teaching. I mentioned Fox Transportation, North River Transportation, athletic savings, utility savings. And I believe the remainder of our SJ service savings will cover that $330,000 deficit. So E and D would roll over, on my estimations, at minimum $350,000. We won't see that money on paper until it's certified, John. What did you say that would be certified, October?
October, November, whenever the Department of Revenue gets it. Does it?
Okay. But, but right now, and I know this committee doesn't like using E and D, and I get that, but this money would be rolling into E and D. And I find it as a way to lower the assessment for both communities. So if you look at that, that paper that I sent out, and I'll read the adjusted numbers. If the committee were to use 350,000 of E and D and 250,000 in circuit breaker, the operating assessment, the adjusted assessment at a 50-50 split would be 11,214,176,79 for Hanson and 15,367,391,75 for Whitman. Again, I'll read those out. 11,214,176,79 for Hanson and 15,367,391,75 for Whitman, for Whitman. Those would be the assessment values based on adding these two revenue sources to lower the assessment, not necessarily lower the budget.
Questions, anyone? Mr. Colliday.
Yes. That would be 150 from the circuit breaker, Jeff?
I would take 250,000. So the circuit breaker numbers that you had in front of you from last week, we have at, at, right now, $272,000, 272,148. We did, have not gotten our FY21 circuit breaker. And we're ballparking it probably at low at about $800,000. So if we dig into this another 250, even if our, my circuit breaker, if my sped costs go over, we'll have circuit breaker money that we'll have for FY21 and potentially be able to roll over to FY22. We don't want to get to where we were for FY19. If you saw at the top of that sheet, we only had $692 to carry over from FY19. I think Lauren and her team has done a, has done a very good job of managing special education. We did not reduce the budget of what she's asking for for transportation and tuition costs. However, using the circuit breaker will offset the, the assessment this way. And we'll still have circuit breaker money left available in case we run over in special education next year.
So you're also anticipating another 350 with all the stuff not being rendered?
So.
E and D?
Yes. So, so Dan, I, I know you're, you're a protector, a protector of E and D, and so am I. But I'm very comfortable feeling that way. When we close books in June, we will be able to use this $350,000 that will be put into E and D. And I find it that I'd rather use it now to lower this assessment and try to move the budget out of school committee for the taxpayers of both Whitman and Hanson to vote on it than not at this point. And this was one of the tasks, I know multiple school committee members said, is there any way we could modify the number, the assessment number by reducing that? This, this is reducing it by $600,000 between Whitman and Hanson.
Anyone else? Chris Howard?
Yeah, so I, I think this is.
Hallie, would you have your hand up? I'm sorry, Chris. Okay, Hallie's next. Go ahead. Go ahead, Chris.
Hallie's muted. Hallie or me?
You.
All right. So I think this is laid out really well. I think it hits a lot of what we talked about. I, I think I'd like to kind of continue the discussion in a more formal manner. So what, what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is make the motion to accept the amendment to the 91 agreement as presented with the modifications from Christine Lynch. We did receive those via email, I think at 5:17 with Christine's edits.
Yeah.
So you're making that motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Was that Mike Jones?
Chris Howard made it, seconded by Mike Jones. Discussion, Hallie Taylor.
I just had a quick question because I can't find the number. Can you refresh my memory? What is E and D right now?
605.
625. John, 605. 600, 605,000, correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And, and, and by our calculations, that E and D number won't be touched by this number here. This is all money that we're going to roll over. Right now, we have the opportunity from Plymouth County and from DESI to recover any lost funds due to COVID-19. The Plymouth County, John's working with the municipalities, Frank and John Stanbrook on that information. They haven't given us a, what's this sheet that you're looking for, John? I'm sorry.
They have a description of the program, but they haven't created the forms to file a claim or, or specific directions in, in what documentation they want and the exact process. Although their intention is, if we get the information relatively quickly, we will be able to get, get it received before June 30th. And that is all important in order for us to have it, to, to be able to count towards our E and D at the end of this fiscal year.
Right. So John has that opportunity through Plymouth County and our local municipalities. And George is working on a grant from DESI. George, can you allude on to that, talk about that grant a little bit?
Yeah, sure. I mentioned it last week. We are available through the, the federal aspect of the CARES Act, which then goes into what's called ESER, which is the DESI component of it. It's based off the Title I allocation. It is federal funding through, funneled through Massachusetts. And we are eligible for $292,000, which will be used for a myriad of things. COVID-related, opening-related, technology-related. And we have two opportunities to participate in that. One is due June 1st, which goes from March 1st through the next year, June 30th, or June 15th, which would just be next fiscal year. Depending on what shakes out with John, depending on what shakes out with some of the other factors going on with reimbursements, we'll wait and see. But our goal is to use the monies that we have from this ESER grant through DESI in order to be ready to reimburse what we had and then get ready for whatever's coming. And it's pretty, it's pretty broad. There are ramifications for Title I school, for private schools, for charter schools, and all of that that we're working through. But it does resemble the Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV federal grant process that we normally do. So that's what I'm working through now.
So comfortability, we're comfortable that we're not going to dip into the $605,000 of E and D for any COVID-related or any closure-related expenses right now.
Go ahead, Chris Howard. Am I missing anybody, by the way? Chris Howard, go ahead.
So I think in terms of the amendment that was presented, in terms of what we kind of talked about last time we met, you know, this conversation has been taking place for, God, I think almost a year in terms of when we first started to talk about the assessment methodology. So I think every person on this committee has influenced a portion of that. I think it's something that we can put forward in far towns, giving the townspeople of both Whitman and Hanson an opportunity to help us move forward. Again, I think, you know, there'll be some folks in Whitman that'll want to have 100% statutory for the reasons that they've articulated. And there'll be some folks in Hanson that want 100% old agreement methodology for reasons they've articulated. But I really think this is a step in the right direction to, to move us forward, both as a committee, as towns, and as a region. So I, I would, I would strongly encourage us to consider that.
Okay, Jeff.
Hey, Don's got her hands up.
I'm sorry, Don, go ahead.
Thank you, Jeff.
I apologize, I didn't see her.
Thanks, Chair Hayes. I have a question and then a comment, if I could. Just question on this amendment, and it's a question I wish I had thought of to submit to Christine. Was there any discussion about being able to insert this amendment to the 2018 document that had been approved by DESI and get a full, you know, agreement approval? Was, was there discussion about that?
She stayed away from that. We really focused on this piece of it because both, Steve Hemmen actually said the, the, both towns rejected the 18 agreement. So the only agreement we can really work on. I think we will use this, the 18 stuff, building on the new regional agreement, which DESI, the, the conversation I had with her today is, you know, everything is, DESI is going to strongly advise us to work on a new agreement for FY22.
Fred, I see you. You're next.
Right. Okay. And then just a quick comment. I would agree with Mr. Howard. This conversation regarding statutory has been a long time coming and, and going on for a long time now this year. There has been a lot of good communication and a lot of good progress. I, it, it, I'm glad we just talked about the budget because my one reservation was just to know that, put our students first and, right? Put our kids first because we are educating kids. So I would want to know that the budget itself. So I would want to know that the budget itself was not being cut, that services were not being cut. Um, so I'm glad to hear about the savings that we have and, um, just to know that this amendment would also tie in with that budget amount, um, to support what our students need. Like I, it, you know, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this question, but it's the type of thing where I, I'd like to know that, um, i- is this budget amount still something that Hanson members could support as well?
That's something we're going to have, hold on, as we move through the discussion. Are you all set, Don?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Fred?
A couple of things. Uh, one, uh, is this legal? I mean, Christine Lynch is ant us. You know, the, Desi's legal team has elected it, so it's legal for us to end the one portion, ninety-one agreement. Uh, we also have a subcommittee that, uh, you know, has, uh, you know, been enacted. Do we need them to take action on this before we do? Um, you know, I just feel quite a lot of people, you know, put in their time and their efforts. You know, do, do we need a formal vote from them in order, in order to move it forward? You know, based on the fact that it goes through a subcommittee first. And I'll refer that to either the chair or maybe Robert's rules. I'm just not sure on that.
We talked to Christine today. She suggested that as we just, well, I didn't speak and Chris didn't speak. We both sat and listened. Correct, Chris?
Correct.
Okay, and, uh, she spoke of the R A A C committee after if we vote any of this in the affirmative and come up with this year's budget should take to working on the two thousand and eighteen agreement that was pretty close to enacted with inserting this language and, because keep in mind, this is a one-year-only method. This is not going to continue. Also, Jeff, I, I'm trying to read it and trying to listen and it's difficult and watch everybody. We talked about, she talked about also making it contingent on votes at both town meetings.
That's correct. Every, everything, everything that we do is contingent upon of the town meeting. So the process, if this committee were to vote this amendment to the agreement, which is legal in terms of Desi, the, the, this committee can, can vote an amendment to the current regional agreement. This committee could, uh, move then the budget out. It would go to both town meetings as an amendment to the regional agreement. Both towns would have to vote that in the affirmative by majority and then our budget. And that was contingent upon the commissioner then approving the amendment to the regional agreement. So there's three steps to that. George?
I also want to say that in her subsequent email later in the day, she did talk about a comprehensive agreement that we would be working on and hopefully move to for next year that would bring everything together so that the parts that were acceptable and great from two thousand and eighteen and then the pieces for the ninety-one amendment that we're working on now would all come together so that next year when we move forward, it would be a comprehensive agreement, brand new for everything that will be brought up to date and up to speed.
By the regional amendment committee to the school committee and then to the selectmen in town meeting.
Correct.
For a formal vote. So they, they're not getting pushed aside, so to speak. They're going to continue on with their work. It's very, very important.
Correct.
Thank you. Are you clarifying?
Continue on, Fred.
Uh, you said this is a one-year agreement?
Yes.
It's an amendment to the agreement for one year. Correct.
For one year.
One year.
Yes.
Okay, so only be good for this cycle.
Fred, you're coming and going again.
Fred, it reads, the amendment reads for fiscal year.
Mind, thank you.
Okay.
Don?
If I'm reading correctly, I see a section that says apportionment of operating costs for FY twenty-two and thereafter will follow the statutory method.
That's correct.
Okay, so this amendment is not, it doesn't look like a one-year amendment to me. It does have provisions for the following years if a comprehensive agreement should not be enacted. Is that correct? This amendment would carry if nothing else ever gets passed.
I, I, I believe.
Clarification.
That's the language used for this to get us through this hump. And I think the, the, what I heard from the Whitman side, especially in that rack meeting was we need to go forward with statutory for FY twenty-two. So if Hanson agrees to this language, this is a, an amendment to this agreement for one year, but with the, the caveat for the next regional agreement that using statutory and, and it's, it's in bold, it's in print, that we're moving with statutory as an, as an assessment method, uh, for FY twenty-two moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, Dan and Fred?
Yeah, that, that, um, running off what Don just said, basically, it's basically saying they're going to get a, we're going to have a fifty-fifty for this year if it passes. And it doesn't matter what happens to either the two thousand and eight or whatever passes after this year, it's statutory. So if the main thing to the agreement is stay statutory. So Hanson gets their fifty-fifty, Whitman will get the statutory come twenty-twenty-two. That's basically what this is saying to make it a little, that's what I'm reading. That's what I've read. It isn't really complex, has nothing to do with twenty eighteen people. They still have to go back and finish that off. All they're going to do is take whatever they had on twenty eighteen, jam this in there because it's already done. It's part of the original, original part and then come up whatever their beefs were with the small adjustments and this takes care of one of the small adjustments too.
I was going to say, Dan, I see this as binding as part of the regional agreement moving forward because they, this amendment states that specifically in both towns have to vote it. So that would be moving forward.
And I just, because I was writing down some numbers, the motion was made by, um.
Chris Howard.
What was the, I just wanted to read back just so I know exactly what we're.
The numbers, Dan, is that what you asked because you broke up?
Yeah, the, um, but the motion was that Chris. So it was.
Read that back? Okay.
Have Michelle do it.
Dan?
Yeah.
Michelle, go ahead, Michelle.
Hold on, I gotta go way back in these.
I, I can tell you what I said, which was.
Like, it's motion to accept the amendment to the nineteen ninety-one agreement modifications, uh, seconded by Mike Jones.
All right, thank.
That good enough?
Yep, thanks. Lost track of that and I'm not sure I was right.
Fred?
So I'm just, I, I just want to clarify. So worst case scenario, the regional amendment agreement committee cannot come up with a solution. Where's statutory for FY two and thereafter? You said one-year agreement and I just make sure I know what I'm voting on a hundred and ten percent. I understand what the amendment is. Amendment that FY twenty-two and beyond. But I know, I don't know whether a year, it's for one year where that came from. And is there something that I'm not, you know, understanding perhaps or don't have the knowledge of? Uh, that was A and then B. If we could, uh, if just.
Hey, Fred.
Amounts, the dollar.
Fred, we're only hearing every other word.
Uh, hopefully it'll clip two seconds with Zoom, you never know. Uh, the dollar amounts on the fifty-fifty would be nice, you know, just to know what the dollar amount are. And the second part was, you know, I just questioned where you said it was only for one year. But the amendment does read, you know, FY twenty-two and further, it would be statutory. I don't know if that came through to you or not.
I'm going to read. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I'm not sure what, what questions because Fred broke up multiple times. I did read the numbers already and I can read them again as far as what that fifty-fifty split was.
Eleven million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-nine cents to Hanson. Fifteen million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents to Whitman. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes.
What I was asking for was what would the numbers have been if it was straight statutory? In other words, how much relief is Whitman providing at that point?
Okay. I know Mr. Hayes.
I'm sorry.
So this is, this is.
One second.
Straight step. Go ahead, Bob.
Go.
Do you want me, do you want me to answer Fred's question? So FY twenty-one required with four is fifty-five million, three twenty-two thirty-eight. The operating assessment for Hanson under straight statutory is twelve million, zero two five, three, 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 fifty-four. For Whitman, it's fifteen, one, five, six, two, three, five. That's straight statutory under our budget. I don't have the numbers, uh, if we throw in E and D and, uh, and, um, circuit breaker, but you try to do that or John, you try to do that if you have a calculator because at the bottom of things.
So that'd be sixty percent of six hundred, forty percent of six hundred.
Correct, correct. So I don't have those exact numbers in front of me right now and I.
Probably around five seventy.
Don't want to miscalculate.
Mr. Boyce, while we're waiting, you had your hand up patiently, I'm sure.
No, that's fine. Um, it actually works out, Fred and, and Dan Colley and others, the two hundred and eleven thousand, fifty-six dollars increase to Whitman with all the other numbers added in. Two eleven oh five six.
Yeah, I didn't take the, uh, E and D.
Does everybody understand that?
And I just did the Whitman side on that.
Okay. Yes. Michelle. Okay, so the proposed amended language, I'm going to read it in. It's going to take a minute, but I think that it's, it's, uh, I have a motion and a second and I think that I should read it in unless you guys just want to vote it before I read it in. But I think it's fair seeing as we're on Zoom, so everybody understands what it says. Does everybody agree with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. And Jeff, uh, Jeff or George just sent it to me. So if I've got the wrong version, stop me. But it says proposed amended language, apportionment of operating costs for FY twenty-twenty-one. Whitman, Hanson Regional School District, pre-k to twelve, one. The apportionment of operating costs for the fiscal year should be determined by the sum of sections A and B below. Statutory method, MGL, small c, seventy, section six shall be used to calculate total assessments reached town. Each member town shall be assessed fifty percent of its total assessment under the statutory method. An amount based on, upon computing the ratio, which each member's town pupil enrollment in the regional district on October first of the year in which the apportionment is determined bears to the total pupil enrollment from all the member towns in the regional district school on the same date, agreement method, in parentheses. In the event that the enrollment in the regional school district has not been accomplished by October one of any year, operating cost should be apportioned on the basis of the number of pupils in grade, grades, pre-kindergarten through twelve residing in each town born on October first of that year, receiving an education at such town's expense. Each member town shall be assessed fifty percent of its total assessment under the agreement method. The portionment operating cost for FY two thousand and twenty-two and thereafter will follow the statutory methodology as defined in six oh three, CMR forty-one dot double zero as follows. The apportionment of operating cost to a member town will equal the minimum local contribution and any other operating costs above the minimum local contribution referred to in this section as above minimum contribution. The aggregate above minimum contribution is arrived at by subtracting your operating budget the following, the following. But from, by subtracting from the operating budget, the following, chapter seventy-eight, the minimum requirement combined local contributions of all member towns and all other general revenue sources to the district. The formula is illustrated below. Operating budget, budget in parentheses, which excludes capital debt and transportation minus chapter seventy-eight as calculated by Desi in parentheses, minus minimum required combined local contributions of all member towns in parentheses as calculated by Desi, minus other general revenue sources to the district equals in parentheses, total above minimum contribution for all member town. To determine each member town's portion, portionate share of the aggregate above minimum contribution that shall be determined based on the ratio of pupil enrollment, including out of district pupils in all member towns in the district on October first of the preceding fiscal year for which the apportionment will be assessed. Two, the total operating costs assessed to each member town will consist of the town's minimum local contribution and the town's share of above minimum local contribution to be determined based on the ratio of resident pupil enrollment in all member towns in the district, including out of district pupils on October one of the preceding fiscal year for which the apportionment will be assessed. Everybody get that? It was an awful lot of language. So any further discussion? That is the amendment you will be voting on. And then we will move to try and get a budget. Now, as Jeff said and I, I stated when I questioned him, this is contingent on both towns voting in the affirmative. Correct? Jeff?
Correct. Yes. But both towns have to.
Listening.
Both towns have to vote the amendment and both towns have to vote the budget. If either, if one town votes the amendment and the other town doesn't vote the amendment, we don't have a budget. If both towns vote the amendment and not the budget, we don't have a budget. If both towns don't vote the amendment, we don't have a budget. So there's more opportunity to not vote this than, than there is. There's steps rather than just proposing a, a, a budget number for the war.
This is the first step to getting a budget for the district. It has to go to the towns. It can be anchored back and forth, it can be discussed, but it, so everyone listening understands it is up to the towns to do the vote. They have that right and that's how it has to be. Don, I'm sorry, you had your hand up. I just wanted to kind of finish up. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. I just want to confirm with Jeff, are you still putting forward the budget amount of fifty-five million, three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight? Is that what we can expect?
That is correct. We just use revenues to adjust the assessment. That's our budget. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Does everybody know what we're voting?
Dan's got his hands. One comment. I just want to, I just want to put it out there that little history because, you know, it's going to go back to both towns. They both have their little groups there that are saying one thing or another. The things I've heard, some Hanson has been, you know, putting the wool over eyes these years. That's not true either. That, that, that's got to go away. Um, what happened is this committee, FinCom, Selectmen had no knowledge of this thing when it got pulled out. It was recognized two years ago. It's been trying to get fixed, sentenced to statutory. And if you go by all the ways, all the methods, you know, that I've read, the three or four different things, they do recommend you go five-year easing methodology. This is just a one-year thing, so it shouldn't be, we shouldn't be hearing from the Whitman side, oh, this is brutal again. They're, they're ripping us off. The recommendation's five years phase in. And if we can get this to go one-year phase in, you shouldn't be complaining about it. We can't keep looking in the past. The past is where all the errors were made. It's, we're trying to get this corrected so we can move on and get this school system back to some, some educating the kids correctly. We're barely doing that now. We've got to keep going forward and, you know, I just want that on the public. You're going to hear complaints from both sides. Hanson did nothing to, to Whitman on purpose. They didn't know this was happening, just like Whitman didn't know it was happening. When it was discovered, they got all upset. All right, that's in the past. Stop, let's stop this talk about, you know, they, they can't do this, we can't do this, they all. All right, that's in the past. Stop, let's stop this talk about, you know, they, they can't do this, we can't do this, they, oh, bang, bang, bang. The original estimates going back years, whenever the state talks about it, is a five-year phase-in. All right, if you're going to be negotiating with this so-called compromise, this is a great compromise. People just got to put this to bed. We have to come up with a budget. And all Hanson's looking for is not the million-dollar shocker and phase it in a one-year. I don't think that's too unreasonable as a community put together and put forth to the towns. So I would recommend, you know, this is passes, get, get it on to the towns, see what they say.
Chris, Mr. Boyce?
Yeah, and just, um, one thing, I wanted to be absolutely certain on the, on the clean amendment copy, FY twenty-two and thereafter statutory method as defined by six oh three C, CMR forty-one dot oh oh. So just quickly looking that up, the statutory assessment method is at the bottom of that forty-one hundred, it's, I, I think it's in, inclusive in the definitions and so forth. This was what was gone over by both, um, Christine, Steve, and then on, uh, then Andy on our side? Is that what was said?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to be absolutely sure. Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a motion and a second. Alec.
Yeah, Jeff, Fred.
I got Alec then Fred.
Okay, I just wanted to say I agree with Dan with everything that Dan said, that this is a great compromise, um, especially for the year. Um, I, I couldn't have said it any better, Dan, so that's all. I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Fred?
Uh, couple things, and I do want to reiterate, uh, Dan, you're a hundred percent correct. The people of Hanson did have no idea. So any, you know, quote-unquote blame or this or that, I mean, heck, if we didn't know, how should they have known? So, you know, I don't want to look at this as an attack on the people of Hanson. However, if we look at minimum local contribution and you just look at FY twenty-one, Hanson's at, minimum local was ten million, I think, nine
Move to the vote.
Somewhere around there. Uh, Whitman was twelve million, two hundred and three thousand. Okay, but Whitman spent fourteen-three last year uh, on education. So there is a big disparity of what Whitman's been affording, uh, for this education. And the five-year phase-in is that a personal opinion by someone from, that's a consultant from DESI. Uh, there was a five-year phase-in back in oh seven when they changed around the formulas, and that ended. But there's no, uh, quote-unquote real five-in phase-in. I wanted to bring up those points, uh, because I thought they were valid.
Okay. Anyone else?
And, uh, one more thing to add.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If, uh, if we don't, and I thought I was done, I just looked at my notes, I had one more thing circled. Uh, so this is a one-year amendment. And theoretically, if Hanson goes through with some people are threatening, uh, and says we want to deregionalize, they do that at a fall town meeting before a new regional agreement can get put into place, uh, the town of Whitman is risking uh, the goodwill that we're shedding out right now, so to speak. So
Fred?
Just wanted to make sure, share that point.
We've touched on deregionalization a bunch of times, and it's a three-to-four-year process to deregionalize.
Not in the ninety-one agreement.
By towns, it has to be, this, this is really the agreement. I don't think we should be into that. Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted, Christine Lynch made clear that, um, um, you know, any, we have to abide by any state laws. Um, regardless of whichever agreement we're using, I, I think is how she put it. So, you know, there's requirements for deregionalization, um, that we'd have to go through regardless anyway, so. Yeah, I'd like to just move to the vote, if we could, please.
Second that.
Okay. I have a, a motion and a second. We're moving to the vote on the amendment. Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Spires?
Yes.
Mr. Cullody?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
No.
Ally Taylor?
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Okay, the next um, up is for a budget number. Jeff has proposed a budget of fifty-five million, three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Note, no sense, Jeff? Even?
Even, yes, that's even.
Does everyone understand that? That includes the four teachers in, in the, in the, uh, district? Does everybody understand? Go ahead, Dan, Dan, have you got your hand up?
Before we put that budget, should we be talking about moving the funds from E and D to squash the assessment now? Make a budget, or do we do the budget first and take more money off that?
Um, we can adjust the number. Chris, did you have any answer to that, Chris?
No.
John Tuffy has his hand up, Bob.
Go ahead, Jeff.
John Tuffy has a comment.
John, go ahead, I'm sorry.
You're, you're muted, John.
Unmute yourself. There you go.
If I couldn't, while not fully aware of, of how you acted in the past, the budget, budget is going to stay the same.
Okay.
The number that we're talking about isn't any different. It is the assessments that, um, that we lowered by the use of additional revenue. So we, I'd ask that you vote, if this is what you want to do, you vote this budget. And then later on, when we deal with the assessments, um, that's
That's when we do the money.
Correct.
That's all I wanted. I just wanted to make sure we're doing the right ways.
Chris, did you have, Chris Scriven?
Um, no, thank you. I'll open up.
Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Howard, I, I need a motion and a second.
That's where I'm going. I'd like to make a motion to accept the budget of fifty-five million, three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars as presented.
Second it.
Who will second that?
Can I?
I don't know who's second, and it sounded like the whole house, though. Michelle, did you get it? That's what I'm worried about.
I got Ally second, seconded it.
Okay.
She was the loudest.
Okay.
Big loud, sorry.
Discussion.
Chris has a, something to say. It looks like Chris Howard.
Chris, go ahead.
So just, I'll be brief. Uh, I'd just like to say, I, I, thank you, Jeff. I think um, you've kind of taken three square pegs and found a way to make them round and fit them in the hole, right? I think you've found a way to grab the budget. Um, if, if we can do what you're proposing here with circuit breaker and E and D, this will result in a lower assessment than we would have had without the four teachers. It includes the four teachers. So, um, I think this is really a step in the right direction. So thank you for what you put together.
Dawn?
I'd like to say thank you all for this budget. Um, we've got kids out of school. We know that. We have so many more obstacles to overcome, just as far as the teachers and the students go, to get them back to learning with this coronavirus. So this budget is the first step forward to supporting the kids in the district, so. Thank you.
Anyone else? Before we move, before we move to the vote. Michelle, there's language, and I don't have it in front of me, that we're going to need for the, the, most, the, uh, two towns amounts.
No, you, I think you can just vote the budget as presented in, in the letter that we send to the towns. We can put any MGL that needs to be in there from the treasurer. The treasurer's
How about if I read it like this, and then we can, um, as was presented before to the two towns of Whitman and Hanson, a budget of fifty-five million, three hundred and twenty thousand dollar, three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars to be broken down as follows. Eleven million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-six
No, that's the assessment. Hey, Bob, that's the assessment. I don't think you want that in with the budget yet.
No, you wrote the budget in.
That's what I was trying to say, the strict language for that.
That's for the assessments, Bob.
Yeah, not for the budget.
I can't read it, though.
I know, I, I, I got the copy from a month ago. If you're approving
You know what I might have to, okay.
It's approving the assessment to each individual town, and then certifying the budget, but we can't vote the budget before we can certify it.
Yeah, 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 okay. So I have a, a met, a motion and a second on fifty-five million, three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Made and seconded, no further discussion. I've been asked to move to the vote a few times. Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Spires?
Yes.
Cullody?
Goodness, yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Ally Taylor?
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Okay. If you give me a second, I think I might have that right in front of me here somewhere.
It originally was highlighted with two yellows.
In the interim, could I ask John Tuffy a question?
Go ahead.
Whereas we have six hundred and four thousand, six hundred and five thousand in E and D, and we're looking to move, you know, pretty much close to that now. There would be no way to take any additional funds, or is that circuit breaker come out of a different line? And would we have a little bit of wiggle room if we wanted to take more than three fifty?
Um, so circuit breaker, I, I guess to answer your question, there's, there are two separate funds we're dealing with. E and E is its own separate fund and has its own place on the balance sheet. Circuit Breaker is technically a grant program from the state, and as a result, that sits in a grant account labeled Circuit Breaker to be used within one year, um, for allowable expenses.
So theoretically, we could, instead of taking three fifty out of E and D, we could take five hundred out of E and D, and we'd be tapping it for a hundred and fifty in actuality.
You would end up, you would, well, there's six hundred and five thousand dollars, so I think you said five hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Correct.
Well, there'd be
Or five, yeah, five fifty.
Then it'd be fifty-five thousand dollars left in E and D.
Right, and then, then we'd end up with four hundred and change left next year once E and D gets recertified.
If, if things go as expected, that's correct.
Jeff, do we anticipate any other uh, possible expenditures that we would need? I mean, we haven't taken anything out of E and D as of this moment. Could we anticipate?
Anticipate, that's a really tough question, because I don't know if we're coming back to school yet. Uh, you know, i- i- in, in normal times, I'd say, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't anticipate any additional costs. But right now, I don't know, um, what that means as far as next year. I'm very concerned about transportation. I'm very concerned about structures. So I don't know, a- and it's a very honest, I don't know, because we, we're getting, we don't have guidance yet from the next, I don't want to
But we can't spend this money after July first, can we? We have to spend, if we're going to utilize it, it has to be done by July first.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's, yeah, that's right. Um, by accounting, by accounting rules, the E and D that we, that we have right now was certified by the state last October, November, and come June thirtieth, um, whatever is in that account disappears, goes away until it's certified again, which is sometime in October, November. Um, my suggestion is that, uh, I don't think it would be prudent to spend down all of our E and D. I don't think it would, um, make good business sense, and I don't think it would look good to the people who rate our debt.
Mr. Cullody?
Okay.
Mr. Cullody, I have a way for you to do this. I entertain a motion from Mr. Cullody. He's going to read to you inserting the numbers as follows. If Mr. Mo, Mr. Cullody would like to make that motion, because he can read from it. So as for the sake of time, because I can't find it.
Bob, Chris Howard had his hand up, and Mr. Boyce had his hand up, too.
Mr. Howard?
So just a quick question with E and D, um, and I think you're going there, Bob. So if, if the three fifty is kind of what Jeff presented, I don't see the downside of, of doing that tonight. But I guess for, for Jeff or for John, in terms of E and D, is that a number that we have the flexibility to fluctuate to, to Mr. Small's point, as long as we're, as long as we change it before July first, can that go up or down? Or is that a one-way figure where we can only, once, if we say we're going to take thrifty, three fifty out tonight, that's it? We can only take more, we can't put it back. Can you just explain that process, please?
So if the committee decided at a later date that it wanted to use more E and D, and let's be, let's be realistic, we haven't gotten to the end of the year yet, and we haven't seen what next year's state aid is going to be and all those other things that go into the budget, so there, in fact, may be some other shortfalls we'll be dealing with um, in next year's progress, projections. On the other hand, if the committee suddenly decided that it did not want to use all of the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars we talked about, then, then they could go back and revoke that funding source, and, um, it would just accumulate. It doesn't really get, you can't appropriate into E and D, however. You could not say we have a surplus and we, and we designate that that go into E and D. E and D in the end just becomes, um, fund balance. It's undesignated fund balance.
Dan, do you have the language?
I got the language, you got the numbers?
Yes, Hanson is eleven million, two four, two hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. Whitman's fifteen million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
What was the, the hundred mark, three hundred and fifteen, three sixty-seven, three, what?
Three ninety-one point seventy-five. You're making that motion? Please read your motion.
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve it, the operating assessment to the town of Whitman for the fiscal twenty twenty-one budget in accordance with the PK through twelve Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement in MGL chapter seventy-one, sixteen B at fifteen million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars, seventy-five cents. Do we do, want to second that?
Second that.
Second, Mr. Small.
Second that. And then discussion?
We have a second by Mr. Small or Mr. Boyce, or both? Mr. Boyce, you're up, and then Fred, you're up. Go ahead, Mr. Boyce.
I was just seconding, that's all.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead, Fred.
Uh, now, and just, I, I just want to understand, that includes the estimated three fifty from E and D, or it doesn't include?
That includes three fifty from, that includes three fifty from E and D and two fifty from Circuit Breaker.
So we have to vote.
So, so isn't that number incorrect? Doesn't that number have to go up, so then we can bring it down? Or is that a net number that we're giving the town? I just want to make sure we do it right.
Yeah, I don't think we can do this until we move the money out of E and D into the, um, budget. Because we're giving out a number, we already did that, which hasn't happened. We have to vote on taking three hundred and fifty out of E and D in, to, to apply to I think that's how it go. Number drops down, we give it to them then.
I'll entertain a motion to take three hundred and fifty thousand out of E and D. Mr. Scriven will make that motion.
Mrs. Taylor will second it.
I'll second it.
I had seconds all over the place, Michelle. I don't know, like, there was a bunch of them.
I'm gonna
Okay, is there any discussion about removing three hundred and fifty thousand out of E and D? Mr. O'Brien?
Just real quick, Jeff, if you can, I got to come off of Zoom video, and I'm going to have to go to my phone. So if you can allow me, and I just called it in.
Sure, I just wanted to know who that was. Thanks, Rob.
I just want to let you know that was me, because I got to come off the video and go mobile.
I was afraid of getting Zoom bombed right there, so.
Thank you.
We, we have to take the first vote off, the, um, first the motion I made.
We, we're going to make another motion?
Well, we have to undo, we just motioned to, to do it, um,
He's going to have to withdraw his assessment motion.
I have to, I have to withdraw that first before we can
Okay, somebody want to withdraw the second?
I'll, I'll I'll withdraw my second, if you were using
Yeah, I withdraw the, withdraw the motion I made, so we can get the assessment of, um, E and D.
Motion made and seconded to remove three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from E and D. Further discussion? Mr. Boys.
Yes.
Spires.
Yes.
Mr. Colony.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Miss Taylor.
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Okay, Dan, would you make a motion, um, I entertain a motion on the amounts?
All right, I can make the motion again to um approve the operating assessment.
Do we need to do anything with Circuit Breaker? To do a line item transfer? Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm sorry, Dan.
Bob, get the check.
Before before
Chris, wait a minute.
Go ahead. Yeah, Dan, before you read that, I think you're making reference to the agreements. I before you read it, I don't know if we should say the uh agreement amended, right? Because we're going to be voting the amendment theoretically and then the budget. So the assessments would be set upon you see what I'm looking at, Dean, or what I'm
On agreeing on the budget?
Yeah, the language, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So we have to change the language then?
I think that where you instead of saying, instead of making reference to the agreement, I think you need to say as amended.
Yes.
Or as the proposed amendment reads.
Both amended.
Proposed, thank you, Fred.
Okay, go ahead.
To approve and to approve the operating assessment to the town of Whitman for the fiscal twenty-twenty-one budget in accordance with the P K through twelve Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement amended approved. Well, how do we want to say that?
Proposed, the proposed proposed
As amended.
All right, as amended.
As proposed.
Amended in Mass General, chapter seventy-one, section sixteen B. That fifteen million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-one, seventy-five cents.
Yeah.
We have a a motion in a second?
Yep. Who seconded that? Excuse me.
I think I did.
This one right now? Okay.
You just did.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Mr. Boys.
Yes.
Spires.
Yes.
Mr. Colony.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Miss Taylor.
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Read the Hanson.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the operating assessment of Hanson for the fiscal twenty-twenty-one budget in as proposed in accordance to the P K twelve Whitman-Hanson Regional School District and Mass General, chapter seventy-one, section sixteen B.
As amended.
As amended at eleven million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-six, seventy-nine cents.
That's the motion. Who wants to second it?
Mrs. Taylor will second.
You get that, Michelle? Discussion? Move to the vote. Mr. Boys.
Yes.
Spires.
Yes.
Mr. Colony.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Miss Taylor.
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Okay, so we voted a budget, we voted an amendment, and we voted how to portion the money to towns. Now it's going to go, so everybody's clear. It's got to be approved. And it has to be um contingents upon approval of everyone in both towns to make all of this happen. Is there anything anyone else would like to bring forward before the school committee? We're just talking budget only. I entertain a mo- Chris? Chris Scriven, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. Yeah, I just just some tying up loose ends here, and I I just want to say this publicly that we've talked to Christine Lynch about our previous vote um to use statutory. Um, and what we were told is that was uh not a required vote. And ultimately, um, the the method of assessment is um you know, uh voted on at town meeting. Um, so there's no need to go back and rescind our vote. I just want to put that on the record.
Because it's it goes to statutory anyway. We're going to have to vote to the agreement method.
This isn't a this one um compromise, if you will, is not statutory. So I just want to make that clear. We do not have to rescind our vote to use the statutory method.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Small.
Sure. Uh, also, when it goes to town meeting, not only will they need to vote the amendment, but they will need to uh separately vote the assessment method. I feel that would be the fairest thing as it's supposed to happen. Not that approval of the budget is considered to be approval of the assessment method. Uh, that way there, everyone will know where it stands perfectly. If we could, I don't know, perhaps do that in a draft letter or along with the letter with the budget to the towns, Jeff?
Chris Howard, then Chris.
Yeah, so I mean, I think I would suggest if the towns affirmatively vote the amendment, then at that point, it would probably make more sense to combine combine the budget vote to include the agreement method in the amendment they just approved as well as the budget. That might be a cleaner way of doing it. So two steps rather than three.
Okay, Mr. Scriven.
Jeff, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but and I may be misunderstanding the the point, Fred, but this amendment is contingent upon um the budget being approved, correct?
No, correct, and but this is perhaps something that's
Jeff, could you
Personal
So so the amendment that will be of the the budget is contingent upon this amendment being passed at town meeting, not the budget and the amendment. The amendment, the budget is contingent at town meeting based upon the amendment. So
Right.
So the amendment first, budget second. If but if the amendment is not passed, we're not even going to discuss a budget on on the floor. It's not happening.
Andy War said the first thing they have to vote, I've got my notes right here, was the amendment, and the next thing they vote is the Okay. Anyone else?
But as
Go ahead, Fred.
Can we just can we just get clarification? Because as my understanding is part of voting the budget, they're voting the assessment method if it's not statutory. And I just feel that with everything that's happened over the few years, that it's a very quick, almost a gimme, you know, as far as that goes. But it's a, you know, we're doing it agreement method one last time. That's what that amendment that you just voted said, and then here's the budget.
Yep.
That's all. I just feel it's
Yep, I I agree. I think that's part of that's part of the language. This amend this amendment to the regional agreement is using the agreement method in this budget. That's correct. And that's how the agreement method is broken up. That's correct.
And that's being transparent beyond compare with the with the voters at town meeting.
Correct.
It says it right in right in the amendment. It says an amount based on computing the ratio which each member's count pupil enrollment in the regional district on October first of the year, in which the apportionment is determined based on the total pupil enrollment from all the member towns in the regional school district on the same date parentheses agreement method.
So No, no, I it may be repetitious, but I feel it's, you know, very clear and clarifying, so to speak. And like I say, it there shouldn't be any anything other than a quick yay, you know, or the green button in Whitman, I would assume, you know, if the amendment passes.
Okay. Anyone else? I entertain a motion adjourned.
So
Will Mr. Small make that motion?
Mrs. Taylor will second.
Mr. Boys.
Yes.
Spires.
Yes.
Colony.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yeah.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Miss Taylor.
I guess so, sure.
Mr. Hayes, yes. Thank you, everyone, and good night.
Have a good night.
Good night, thank you, everybody.